All right, let's try this again. I'm calling to order this regularly, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Long Grove for August 10th, 2021. As the Village President, however, I've determined that due to conditions relating to the COVID-19 pandemic, it's only feasible to make the Village Hall accessible to a limited number of the public to attend this meeting in person. In-person attendance by members of the public is being limited to those who have pre-registered, and pre-registration was made available on a first-come, first-served basis as set forth in the Village Board Agenda. For persons who had not pre-registered for in-person attendance, tonight's public access to this meeting has been made available through the Zoom platform as set forth in the meeting Agenda. The members of the Village Board have also connected the Zoom platform to allow the public to hear the open session proceedings. I would now like to ask that Village Clerk Sherry Slagman take roll call and confirm that a quorum is present and everyone can be heard.
Okay. Trustee Barowski, can you hear me?
Yes, here.
And I can hear you. Trustee Kritzmeyer, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee O'Connor, can you hear me?
I can.
And I can hear you.
She can't join yet, so just sit tight for a second. We have to electronically let her in.
Trustee O'Reilly, can you hear me?
I can.
And I can hear you. Trustee Tanucci, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a forum, right? Yep, you can hear me, right? I'm here, I'm present, yep.
Okay.
All right, now can we make a motion to let Trustee O'Connor in to attend remotely?
Uh huh.
Okay, moved by Trustee O'Reilly, seconded by Trustee Kritzmeyer. Roll call, please.
Okay, Trustee Barowski?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, Rita, you are in the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, can we all rise to say a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome, everyone. The first item on the agenda is homeowners associations. Is Willowbrook here, Mark Challenger, or anybody from Willowbrook? I don't see anyone, but just thought I'd ask. Or from Stonehaven, John Lowndes, I think it is. What's that?
Oh, the screen's frozen, okay, all right.
So I guess they're not here, so the next item on the agenda, oh, is the video, I can do it this way then, let me start my video. At least I'll have live video. There we go, you can see me, right? The next item on the agenda is the public safety report, and I saw Sergeant Ryan Amber, you joined us tonight, you were kind enough to do so. How are you?
Good, good.
Good. Do you have anything for us?
Today, I received an email just along to you, somebody who resides in the 5900 block of Partridge over in Blue Heron. Sometime overnight, there were several subjects tried to gain access to a few cars in this driveway, so he was alerted by his video system, scared them away, and reported it five hours later. So he may have some video, but he wasn't able to find it. Maybe it's up to anybody in Blue Heron to keep an eye out, or maybe some neighborhood kids out to, up to no good.
Got it, yeah, so the next, what is it, the next morning or something, you reported it?
Yeah, looks like he reported it this morning.
Okay, got it. I know we, we've been watching the tunnel get tagged, so definitely, yeah.
Okay, I haven't heard any more about that since, I think, a couple months ago.
It happened again, though, it looks like, right? Yeah.
Okay, were they doing something down there to block the access to it at some point? I don't remember what that was, or it was not being used or utilized?
No, they're, they're, they're just, it's being used, right? They're just putting graffiti up on the, inside the tunnel, so.
And the old stuff was cleaned off, so they know it is definitely not the old stuff?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
All right, I'll relay that to the cars out there to keep an extra eye on that again.
Yep, we'll have to figure that one out, so. Any other, any other questions?
Hey, Ryan, if I can just, just real quick, that, talking to Deputy Oates, he said some of it looked like gang, gang style, so you may, whatever that's worth.
Well, when I talked to him about the last incident, he said it definitely was not gang, any gang-related graffiti, so I'd have to touch base with him to see if this is different. I can assure you, there are no gangs in Long Grove, so even if there was some type of gang graffiti, it's from kids who just want to be cool. You don't have a gang problem in Long Grove.
Is there, is there a product that is graffiti-proof that can be painted on those walls?
Rita.
Are you asking me? Sorry.
You, buddy?
So Greg, she asked if there was a graffiti-proof paint or something we could use down there to prevent it.
Yeah, Chicago's experimented with, with many things and not have been, have not been that successful. I've got a call into Hila Township, and we're going to see what, what approach we're going to take on it. Last time, they just did a paint over because they couldn't get it, couldn't get it off.
Was the lighting an issue down there last time? Was that resolved?
It looks like it has, right? There's two lights, right? And there's one on each end of the tunnel, not one in the middle. There's only two.
Oh, there are only two?
Yeah, I was down there over the weekend, yeah.
Okay, and they're working, then?
They're working, yes, they both worked, yep.
Great.
Their, their motion activated, I believe, when you go in there, they turn on.
So they, so they have really light, nice light to do their artwork.
How long is that tunnel?
So if, if we, if we.
It goes underneath, it fully goes underneath 83, so it's about that long, a little bit longer.
Yes, once they get in the tunnel, it's kind of dark in the middle, probably, so.
It's a little dark in the middle, yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Rita.
I think if we can find who's doing it, we should, for punishment, have them paint a very pretty mural inside of there for us.
There you go. We'll take that under advisement. All right, anything else for Sergeant Amber? Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah, anytime.
I said nice things about you last week. Thank you.
Did you hear that? Yeah?
I said nice, I said nice things about you last week. It was really a pleasure to meet you, Sheriff, at the reception.
Oh!
Eilberg was, Eilberg was at the, the open house for Denise and Greg, so.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Very good.
So he was there.
You guys need anything?
Yeah. So, no, he was very nice, he stayed there a long time, yeah.
He did.
Right? But, yeah, we all said nice things about you.
Well, I appreciate it, we can always use that.
Thanks, Bobby.
That's why I owe you, bro.
You owe me nothing.
Okay.
Actually, what you, you just got to keep coming to our meetings, right? Don't give us up for that water stuff, all right, you know?
I live in Hawthorne Woods now, so I'm not skipping and jumping away, I've been waiting to come to a meeting.
Excellent, well, we look forward to seeing you in person at some point in time soon.
All right, sounds good.
All right, well, we're going to let you go, we're going to move on. Anyone from the, the Long Grove or Countryside Fire Department that has anything for us? Okay, if not, I'm going to start by thanking former Clerk Gaten for her over five years of service, and I'm also going to thank her for staying on during the interim. But we are fortunate enough that somebody has raised their hand. Her name is Michelle Schmidtke, to be our next Village Clerk, and I would like to appoint her, and I'm looking for your support.
Motion to approve, or?
Yes, motion to approve, right?
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Trustee Barowski, seconded by Trustee Kritzmeyer. Roll call, please, Sherry?
Trustee Barowski?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, thank you, thank you. She could not make it here tonight, and I, I know that Amy's going to help her get acquainted with the role, thank you, Amy. I also, we have a little surprise for you, not tonight, but we'll get a little surprise for you too, thanking you for all your service. But we're going to miss you in the role, but I know that there's other things that you want to be doing, and you're going to be free to do those things now, so.
I understand.
Thank you.
...to our meetings anyway, as liaison from the HDLGBA.
Oh, you're going to be coming to our meetings anyways? That, that's what Bobby just said?
Yep, that's why I'm here right now.
But you'll be free not to take the minute, so that's a good thing, right?
Exactly.
All right, good stuff. Well, thank you for your service, it's been appreciated, so.
Thank you, it was my pleasure.
All right, and I'm looking forward to Michelle getting seated, so she'll be sworn in at the next meeting. All right, we have before us an application for a raffle for the Rotary Club of Long Grove, Kildare, and Hawthorne Woods.
Motion to approve.
Okay, that was moved by Trustee O'Reilly, seconded by Trustee Tanucci, that's a roll call, please.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Trustee Barowski?
Aye.
All right, motion carried.
Can I now ask a question about, like, the tax ID number and all that, or their 501(c)(3) number, or anything like that, or should we just be quiet?
Well, I think that, you know, the thing that this, so there, so this actually, we should pay attention to, Chris has asked for several things to be on these forms, and they just haven't been, and I think that, Chris, you should bring those things forward, and let's make sure we revise the form and do it, right, you know?
Can this be an online form too, so, I mean?
I agree with you, with that too, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, we should be doing as many applications as we possibly can online.
Yeah, something like ERPA, and, you know.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, so the next thing on the agenda is, I guess it's following us correctly, is the consideration of approval of a special event permit for Irish Days, September 4th through the 6th. I will add one thing, the insurance policy appears to be partially out of date, so unless you want to have a discussion, I would just ask for the approval subject to the updated, getting an updated insurance policy.
Uh huh.
Okay, moved by Trustee O'Reilly, seconded by, by Trustee Tanucci, that would be a roll call.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Barowski?
Yes.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
O'Reilly.
Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Now, I don't know if Ryan's here, but there's, the next item on the agenda is discussion of consideration and request of the Historic Downtown Long Grove Business Association to modify requirements for auditing funds, and having the audit only be done for the special service area, because they, the SSA, because they, they didn't make enough money to really require an audit, so we were told that this needs to come before the Board for discussion, does it need a formal approval? I don't know that, that's something that somebody can help me on.
The, the Village Attorney looked at the resolution agreement with each, the historic district, and said they are responsible, as part of that agreement, for reporting their finances. However, if they were looking for relief, that request was certainly outside my scope of authority and had to come to the Board.
This, this came up at their last meeting, and that's why I, I sent it along as, as a request from them, to not have to do a full-blown audit of all of their accounts, and, and, and just, just what we need, or what we want, to do, save them some money.
And I know Trustee Kritzmeyer had wanted to make sure we were at least getting the SSA portion of them, at least.
Yeah, my concern honestly is not, you know, to twist arms into having them spend money on audit kind of thing, my concern, and I've said this four years in a row, and I have yet to see reasonable results, a plan for how that money is to be used, reasonable results, I mean, it's for promotion of tourism and economic development, things like visitors to the visitor's center, visitors to festivals, new business, website visits and metrics on that, you know, on their thing, new initiatives and new results, as well as if there are 501(c)(3), there should be a Form 998 filed with the IRS, or something that should be a pretty straightforward. So I'm not trying to arm-twist them into doing an audit, I'm much more interested in program results, as well as a plan at the beginning, our agreement that you negotiated was a budget, and I don't, to my recollection, I don't know that we even saw that at the beginning, so.
I think that, that you're right, that, that that has been requested and promised, and I think that they're not asking to not do the audit for our needs, but I think above and beyond the audit is what you're looking for.
I'm looking for the program results, not just the, I mean, you know, we should, because we're stewards of that money and contracting with them, we should have an audit of that money, and how it fits in with everything else but need, the program. I mean, part of our stewardship is not that they didn't embezzle it, I don't believe for a second that, you know, that's not my concern, if, what was it used for?
Yeah.
And did they learn something, or did we all learn something, and are changes being made, if, if something, you know, didn't work?
I will follow up with Ryan, Ryan is fearless running it now, and, and I think we'll get better results.
Any other discussion? I mean, I'll support him in that, I, I would love to get that information too, but I.
I think I ask every year.
Every year.
I'm happy to drive, I'm at the meeting on Tuesday, I'm happy to drive that point home with the trustee as well.
Okay.
The other thing that I know, I mean, Rita can speak up, but they should be filing sales tax. I know I, I attended something from the IML on financial stuff, but as a sponsor of the festival, that organization is responsible for sales tax filing, at least that's what I understood from that webinar, so if I'm incorrect on that, please correct me.
As I understand it, the sales tax can either flow one of two ways, either through the program, you know, through the event itself, in which case that would be the Historic Business District Association, or each of the individual vendors can provide a separate return for their sales during the event, and I, I'm not quite sure which approach has been historically used, but one of those should be the means for doing the, the sales tax reporting.
It seems like we should understand that.
We should.
And, and the question is being able to account for those businesses or vendors that would be in here for a given festival, and, and how do we make sure they're permitted through us, so we have some mechanism to, to look at the sales tax dollars, if that's the vehicle that's, that's likely.
When you say permitted, I don't know what you mean.
On file, I, you know, to go through, and if they're part of the festival as, as a special use permit, and they fall underneath that festival, some mechanism to turn around and account for it.
Okay, but you're not talking of permitting?
No, I'm not, that's not, I'm talking, just like registering a business.
Okay.
Permitting is probably a bad word, register with us.
Okay.
Anyone have any, want to have any further discussion on it? If not, somebody want to make a motion?
Already did.
Did you? Okay, so, a motion was made, right, by Trustee O'Reilly, to not require an audit of their Long Grove Downtown Business Association, but, but, but an audit for?
Partial audit.
Just a partial audit, right, okay.
But does the partial audit include the data that the, that the festival ordered?
Well, the audit would be the financial aspects of the books, but the data is something separate, right?
The, under the agreement, they're supposed to provide a program report, which includes the audit, and as I understand the motion, it's to narrow the scope of the certified audit to simply be an audit of the SSA monies, not all of the association monies, but the program report, unless I'm misunderstanding, is still expected to be delivered to the village.
When, when would we expect that, by the way, if we're on a calendar year basis?
Well, for annual, we have to look at the, I would say we have to look at the date that the resolution was adopted by the Board of the annual.
Vic, do you have any?
Yeah, it's actually supposed to be submitted as part of their proposed budget, and the proposed budget is supposed to be submitted by October 31 of each year.
Okay.
So we're at, are you too?
Wow, that's shocking.
Okay.
Well, it depends from which year you're looking, we're, we're way behind in all the other years, but we're probably ahead for this year.
The last thing I got, I think, was, you know, a balance sheet kind of thing, no, not even a balance sheet, an income, an income statement from 2018, I think.
Okay, so we have a live motion on the table, do you agree with how Vic said it? Because I'm not going to repeat it.
Yes.
By Trustee O'Reilly, anyone want a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kat Tanucci, Trustee Tanucci. Roll call.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
I'm going to say.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Barowski? Trustee O'Connor?
Okay, motion carried, thank you.
Just as an aside about downtown, the recent car show for Special Olympics, she raised over $10,000 for them.
Wow.
Just stunning. She really does a good job.
That's awesome. Okay, I may need a little bit of help here on the next one about the consideration of approval of a plat of easement for the Archer parking lot, Philly County forced main replacement, and the reason I ask is two, because we also have a, a pathway here that we're putting in, so, you know, Jeff, you may want to give us some clarity on where this is in relation to that new pathway too, right?
Well, we'll, we'll take the plat of easement separately, because this is specifically on the Archer parking lot property.
So it's just, but it doesn't, it didn't look that way when you look at the.
So that is the schematic, and that's a, a retread of what was discussed in April.
Oh, okay.
So the county's willing to be replacing that whole force main, I'll talk about that a little bit more.
Okay.
To the path, and how that implicates that, or impacts it. So the subdivision, or the plat of easement that you have before you, in April, I talked about how there's no easement over the sanitary sewer that's in the Archer parking lot that was put in in 2009, 2010, and the other part of the discussion in April was the county wants to.
Am I done? No, I just, I was just going to try to bring up the plot of survey. Keep going, I'm sorry.
So the other part of the discussion in April was the county wanted to determine the sanitary sewer force main before getting to downtown, filter the Archer parking lot, utilize those sewers, avoid the disruption to the downtown. So this is the plat of easement, so the county is, got the warm and fuzzy with the land rights, so they move forward with their project. So 90% of the easements on here are older sewers that were put in 19 years ago, county just didn't want to take ownership of them with no flow to them, so it's just that northern portion, 108 feet, if you want to read it, but that they need for their sewer force main project.
Okay, I give up, I can't connect to it, so.
So what we're looking for tonight is approval of this, and then later on, we'll get the MyBar, bring it in here, they'll put his John Handout on it, or whichever signatory video you'd like to use.
Do you have any concerns?
I do, yes.
That's good. At least the phone's up, so this, this is an internet connection with Wi-Fi, so we're hopefully going to be back online shortly. So, all right.
So any concern about any future building over the top of it, like, is there anything we could do that would, like, force, let's pick a little crack, that force main shouldn't be there, because we can't build on it now? So the easements around the sanitary sewer that's already put in there, we had the, it's well off of the four outlets. With the easement, we do agree, no buildings on there without the county's permission, so they can get to their sanitary sewer, but if this ever gets redeveloped along the future, long ways in the future, I think, would be a discussion to be had, but the village just invested, you know, 10 years ago, this is still just invested, I think, in my mind, you know, $2 million to redo the parking lot, so I don't think that, that's something I'm in red.
Yeah, we just need to get those outlets developed.
It is unbelievably dark outside, everyone just.
I just looked at.
Yeah, so, so do we need to have a motion here? What do we need tonight?
Vic, do we need a motion? I'll, I'll look for you, or.
We do need a motion to approve the plat of vacation, and that would, that would require a roll call vote.
Okay, so that was moved by Trustee O'Reilly, seconded by?
Second.
I keep looking at you, you say second.
Sorry. We're running the edge of the corner.
Trustee, seconded by Trustee Tanucci, roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor?
Come back to me, please, Sherry.
Okay, Trustee Barowski?
Yes.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Really, we have a live motion, I do have an additional question. Aye.
And Trustee O'Connor again.
Aye.
Our sheriff thing is saying, like, severe thunderstorm warning, 70 mile an hour gust, expect substantial true damage.
Yep, I know.
So I'm looking at the radar, it's weakening slightly as it approaches us.
Okay.
One more question.
Yeah, let's keep moving, so motion carried, okay.
My question for Jeff is, you had some comments about the impact on the pathway. Are you going to discuss that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we may or may not finish our meeting if we lose our power.
I think that was a.
All right, so, so let me keep going here, the, the next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration of an ordinance pertaining to the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. Vic, I don't know if you want to introduce, but we have some paperwork here that we would be required to sign or agree to, to use the funds, right?
Yes, there, there is a cache of documentation that the village will have to complete in order to get the monies. I understand from, from Greg that much of that paperwork effort has already gone forward. One of the quirks is that, among the things that we'd be certifying, is that we are applying the procurement conflict of interest standards that the federal government establishes. Those standards, however, are broader than the ones that are applicable under Illinois law, and broader than what we have in the village code, which we have essentially aped what the, what the state of Illinois has required. So rather than run the risk that we are not in compliance with that particular effort, this ordinance, which is something similar to what the IML had recommended, will formally authorize the pursuit of the, of the rescue plan monies, but also, with respect to those monies only, apply the federal conflict of interest standards, and that way there won't be any inconsistency between what we have generally, because that won't be applicable, but what we have for the, for the grant itself.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so, motion to approve by Trustee O'Reilly, seconded by Trustee Kritzmeyer. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Trustee Barowski?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. The next thing is we have two items that can kind of go together, discussion of the bid tabulation for the RPC pathway, and then considering the award of that to the Chicagoland paving. So Jeff, you want to take away on this?
Absolutely. So last Tuesday morning, bids were open for the Robert Parker Cotton hat, this is the pathway that connects the Archer parking lot to the Sunset Rural Development on the other side of Route 83. This is also the project that has a 50/50 cost split on the maximum $48,000 and change for the construction of the hat through the IDNR bike trails grant program. So bids were open, we got a little bid of $185,000 from Chicagoland, near local in Lake Zurich. The engineers' estimate for the project was $228,000, so bidding climate is still good, so benefits to Long Grove on that. So. So, uh, Chicagoland is a, a good contractor. We worked well with them, uh, on several other projects. So, um, in the board package is our recommendation to consider the approval of award to Chicagoland. Uh, I think now would be a good time, um, the force main replacement project with the county's going. I reported that we were hoping that that would get done before we did the path. Uh, a couple of meetings, we know I said the non-funding was not secured from them. It's going to be a spring 2022 project. So that force main, um, as you were looking at your map, comes down Three Lakes Drive, that's here, um, okay, that means this, um, we need to pass them out unless you really want it. Comes down Three Lakes Drive, turns west, heads into and towards downtown. This here is the easement that was just approved. So when the county comes in, they're going to, uh, put this force main into here. At that corner where there's the yellow highlight, they are going to need to dig a pit there so they can install the sanitary sewer along Robert Parker Cossin Road as, uh, with directional drilling techniques. So everything west of this yellow, there won't be any ground to service. Unfortunately, that yellow is 15 feet long, it's going to be an eight-foot wide path. So that section of path, um, the village's decision will be, do the project now, the county moves and replaces that 15 feet, or, um, let's fake it what it is next year, 2022. I will say that if we delay that, we, there's the additional step in there that I would need to contact the, uh, IDNR to get a grant extension. The grant agreement that, for this project expires February 25th of next year. So, um, I know, I know there's different feelings. In the ideal world, the sanitary sewer would be done, put the path on top, it would be nice, new and neat. Um, unfortunately, the cars didn't fall that way, um, so it's the board's decision, you know, it's 15 feet, you know, um, worth it to remove or replace when the county comes in. Again, the spring 2022 project, we don't know.
Can't we get the county to replace it?
The, the county will, they will, they'll replace that at their cost.
Okay.
The road needs to be neutralized.
Uh, the asphalt is going to, you know, you're going to have two stop pads in it. The asphalt is going to look pretty, pretty well similar because it's going to be placed within probably about six months of each other. It's going to oxidize, it's going to turn from black to that nice gray, as we know asphalt looks like after a while, uh, pretty much at the same rate.
Chris?
But the silliness of that is two darned bodies, put work in, turned it up, and then redoing the same work twice. Can't we make that deal now and say, hey, we'll leave those 15 feet vacant for now? Do you guys imagine?
Absolutely.
Or something like that?
Absolutely.
Wow. I don't think that's a good idea.
So, you know, um, I talked to, go ahead. I'm intrigued. Why is that?
Uh, be- because it, I, I could just visualize that, that we, that it would screw up the rest of the, the path if you left a 15-foot.
Well, it will, but then they're going to dig it up anyway.
I just imagine people will use the path in the meantime, or, and, you know, and put plow in and stuff.
I think it's important to get that in as soon as possible. When you look at the people walking down the street late at night.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you can't see them because I, I typically go out later than most, probably, and I'm down here usually at the hour when it's dark, and I see people walking down the side of RPC. And if that pass there, I'm assuming they're going to walk, I hope they'll walk.
We're talking about a 15-foot extension that would be done, right?
Right.
I mean, we have, like, if we have a path in and a 15 feet of whatever is there for asphalt, we're starting out.
So I would, I would say, um, Chicagoland would prep it for paving as part of the project so that they can keep their machines, you know, in line. So you have asphalt, and then you drop down three inches, go 15 feet and come back up. Um, I was going to mention, I talked to Chicagoland, um, and they're anticipating this would be a three-week project, so, uh, as soon as we get, I got blessing on this.
How's that?
There's a very real possibility that it's going to be done, you know, for, uh.
Apple cut?
Uh, probably, maybe not apple cut. Could be, um, but, uh, Christmas is, that's what I'm going for.
I was talking for apple cut, that's a week.
But trying not to say, you know.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah, there you go.
It'll be up there.
Um, so, but isn't there an ADA, is there an ADA aspect at the corner too, is a part of this?
For, at 83, and, yeah, all of that.
No, but at, um, at Archer, do we?
Yeah, coming across that.
So where that 15 feet is, is that going to be, if you don't have that, with somebody with a wheelchair or?
If you don't need a compacted surface, you know, and we have, you know, uh, if you already have your driveway done on the sides of it, they camp it to like a 45-degree angle. So you have that, you know, to ramp down, it probably would make it just a little bit longer. But, you know, for ADA compliance, you would be able to transition down there. There's nothing, uh, against the code to go over gravel.
Okay.
As long as it's compacted and otherwise.
I understand your logic, Chris, I completely, and, I mean, it is, it's surface to do it and do it again, but I still think, if they're going to compact it, then it can degrade. To me, if we have a path there, we can bring people in wheelchairs and say, thank you, thank you, that's enough.
And, and then it becomes the county's obligation to, to repair it properly.
Yeah, and once, once the village gets done with their project, believe me, we'll take pictures and, uh, we'll tell the county, this is what it looks like after we're done. This is what we'll look like.
I, I have a question, but I, I suspect the answer is complicated, so I, I'll, I'll forego it tonight, but I'll tell you what the question is. What kind of safeguards are going to be put in at the light on 83? I watched some people the other day, granted it was dark, and they ran across the street against the light. Now, you can't legislate stupid out of the world. However, those cars are coming 50 miles an hour, and I wonder who will be the first victim if this isn't done carefully.
I think they were going to do timing changes.
Yes, it's, it's timing changes. There's going to be pedestrian combinations, there's going to be countdown timer.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't need it tonight, but it's just so, you know, I'm thinking.
Can I add on, it's like?
Sure.
Could you please describe to us what the pedestrian, the new pedestrian experience will be crossing the road? Not now, not now, later.
Yes.
And, and what additional lighting will be, will be there, uh, to, to illuminate the pedestrian? So do you need a motion?
Yeah, we do.
A motion.
Okay, so motion, uh, approving the contract.
My job.
For RPC pathway installation in Chicagoland paving, contracts, contractors in the amount of $185,000 with a 10% construction contingency for the project. So that was moved by trustee O'Reilly.
I think Rita should be, have her name on there.
Okay, so, um, Rita, do you want to, are you okay?
Take mine.
Do you want to make the motion?
Well, um, I can. I could add, you know, two things to the discussion. When Jeff and I talked about it this afternoon, can you hear me? Okay, I feel like I'm kind of in a tunnel here.
You're a little bit of a tunnel, but we can hear you.
Um, you know, as, as we thought about the different options, be, and the main one being safety with people during festivals and bad weather and so on and so forth, all those reasons, you just go ahead with it, let the, let the county cut it up, let them put it back, it's not the end of the world. Um, you know, let's just do it. So, uh, yeah, I, I don't care if I make the motion or not, I'm happy to second or, or make the motion, I'm making.
Okay, so we're going to let you make the motion. You, this was moved by trustee O'Connor? Okay, great. Seconded by trustee O'Reilly, right?
Yeah, it's my job tonight.
Okay, so seconded by trustee Tanucci. Okay, roll call, please. Did you get that?
Yes, I think I did. Uh, trustee Barowski.
Yes, indeed.
Yes.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Yes, please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Um, are there any village and, or president and trustee reports? I don't have a report. Anybody? All right, if not, um, anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular village board meeting? Okay, that, that was moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by.
I will second that.
By trustee Tanucci. Roll call, please.
If, if I could, if I could ask if that be subject to minor corrections, I had provided some to Denise earlier today.
Okay, subject to minor corrections, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
That's the name, I was not there.
And trustee Barowski.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Um, I'd now like to open it up for public comment. Does anyone have public comment tonight?
Yes, I do. Why don't we have public comment in the meeting?
You know, it was, it was, we'll need to redo the agenda, it was the old COVID, uh, thing, so. Um, all right, so that was your public comment. Any other public comments? You were limited to 10 seconds or less, Chris.
I'm wondering, Bobby, about the job fair. How did that go on Monday?
What?
Oh, the job fair, yes.
We're still, we're still waiting to hear back from either Mary Ann or Joanie. Today, they were all both off work.
It was boring.
Okay.
Yeah.
Didn't hear yet, yep. Thanks for asking. Anything else, Amy?
Nope.
Okay, there's, there's, uh, no other public comment? I'm, uh, going to keep us moving. Um, there's no reason for executive session, there's no other business, so the last thing on the agenda is to adjourn.
Engineers' report.
Oh, the engineers' report. I skipped over your report. I'm sorry. No, you're right, I, I.
You have five minutes.
No, I'm going to go faster than that.
Oh.
Sorry, thank you for catching that, yes. I keep.
So, the road is going to get striked as to whether it allows the bridge's schedule to be fixed the week of August 16th, the last two to two and a half days. Simple parking lot will be under construction as soon as I can get the contractor out there. Uh, we talked about the, uh, Robert Parker Cossin pathway, Route 22 and 83 not pressing for tonight, and we did have a meeting with the state to discuss their plans, which are five to six years away.